I would ask to start with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. I can ask for approval of this morning's agenda.
I will make a motion to approve today's agenda.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
We might have to bounce around to get to nine oh five.
Yep. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item I have is consideration of approval of the minutes dated March thirty of twenty twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that. And you? Comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next, I can ask for a consideration of approval of claims for payment dated April sixth, twenty twenty-two.
I will make a motion to approve.
Second that. Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next, I can ask for consideration to approve the DOT fiscal year twenty twenty-three secondary roads budget.
Sure. It's pretty much just approved and what you guys have already approved with our accounting budget. So the numbers are the same. If he just wants to see it. My thanks, do I say? Entering this year, we had a four million dollar carryover. It's projected about a four point seven and then enter that next year. And what did I have for an ending carryover? It hasn't been shown on the print, but I thought it was three point eight million. So there is three point one.
Three point one carryover. Any predictions, projections on road fuel tax use with the current price of fuel?
That doesn't affect the price of fuel, so we're getting the same.
Well, but is it going to deter people? There's no deterrents in?
No, their projections were, they were like within like a hundred grand of last year's, I think. So yeah, they've kind of projected to stay steady.
Okay.
Yep, last year was three point five eight seven, next year is three point six eight seven.
Just so we're clear, you have a large carryover because FEMA has been paying back.
Yes, that was my job for a month. I mean, I put in a lot of effort to get like two point three million dollars back from them. So and we want a carryover because obviously we just learned we can use two point three million dollars in one year very quickly if there's an emergency. So yeah, you want that.
But the reimbursements are what pushed that up there.
Correct, yes, because it was sitting at under two million and now here we are at four point seven.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the Iowa DOT fiscal year twenty twenty-three secondary roads budget.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item I would have is consideration to approve the DOT fiscal year twenty twenty-three five-year construction plan. Taylor?
So we have to do this every year, kind of update them on the five-year construction program. I didn't change it that much mainly because we knew what construction prices were doing, so I was a little bit nervous. Just kind of update you. The only thing I did add, I added the Wasa Bridge. And then our stuff that we talked about at our meeting this morning with the local bridge money. So coming up for the next year, just so people know, this would be for twenty twenty-three, not for this summer. So for twenty twenty-three, the year we're talking about here, the paving would be D sixty-five by Garden City, long time coming. And we'd also be paving another three hundred and fifty feet of concrete at the Pine Lake Corn Processing Plant on One Seventieth. And then for bridges, we decided this morning to do a local one on Hundred Fifty Street by Alden. And then I had a few deck overlays. We also talked about this morning. We have the Wasa Bridge, which does not come out of our fund at all, all state money. And then the other local bridge is on T Avenue south of D sixty-five.
And if approved today, this will be published to the county's website, correct?
Yes.
That being said, I'd make a motion to approve the Iowa DOT fiscal year twenty twenty-three five-year construction plan as presented by Engineer Rawl.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion to second any discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item I have for consideration is the Act of Royal Services Agreement with Overstone Group LLC.
Although I didn't make a motion to approve.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. It is officially nine oh six AM and I'm going to open the public hearing on the proposed amendment to ordinance number one. First. So.
Mr. Chair, please pause the public hearing.
Yep.
At the conclusion of the test, I'll confirm that it does work. So today's public service announcement, tornado warning siren testing is three minutes first Wednesday of the month.
Wow.
Does the one by the old hospital go off too? I don't really monitor it coming, though.
Anytime, anytime the sirens go off, I go to three minutes.
Okay, that's the cycle period.
All right.
Would you like to, it's been asked that we say a little bit about ordinance one and ordinance four.
Sure. So ordinance one is just the process in which we go about adopting and publishing ordinance changes and those things. And we're changing this in hopes of, well, that we'll consider changing this today in hopes of being more parallel to the state code.
And then forty would be?
Forty is ordinance that is regarding commercial energy production.
Windmills on the tax revenue, isn't it? The percentage, yeah.
So I'll go ahead and ask for defer to Jolene first. Have you gotten any comment? Okay. Okay. Pauline, you're up to bat. Thanks for being here today.
I guess I'd just like to say, I think we need the whole resolution needs to be printed in the papers so that people in the county can be aware of what's going on and what's happening. Many people in the county, like the elderly or the poor, for some reason or another, don't have computers or and they, to look this information up, like for myself, I've been out of things and haven't been aware of what's going on, but you know, with what these supervisors are kind of doing here lately because I've been sick or whatever, but I can always read it in the newspaper or I have people that call me. So I think we need to have this published in the paper. And if it costs too much money to do this, I'm sure we can find money elsewhere by cutting and putting this in, in the paper. And I know we've talked about time issues on this, but I think if we get it at least, if you notify and put it in the paper at least one time, I'm sure people are going to see it. And then you can also put it up on the website, like you said, but I really do think that that would be fair for everyone in the county to see. So it also gets printed in the paper.
Okay. Other public comment?
See if they got the bill laid up yet.
Okay, with that, I can ask for a motion to close the public hearing on ordinance one.
You're just closing on ordinance one?
Yeah, I was going to do the public hearing separate of each ordinance.
Okay, I'll make a motion to close public hearing on ordinance one.
Okay. Next, I would go ahead and open the public comment on the proposed repeal of ordinance forty. And Jolene, have you received any public comment? Okay. Anybody want to publicly comment?
This is Donna.
Good morning, Donna.
Good morning. I would like to ask why you are wanting to repeal ordinance forty?
In my opinion, there were some unfair advantages that weren't consistent with the rest of commerce. And so ordinance forty, repealing that appears to be a way to level the playing field for commerce in Harden County. At the same time, I can tell you that the state legislature has bills in, in the works that are still alive and well in both the House and Senate that would actually make repealing ordinance forty a moot point. But as things progress in the Iowa legislature, I believe that could have an impact on any decision today that the county supervisors make on that, Donna. So initially, the thought was.
Sorry, but, but, excuse me, but the screen is freezing and it's breaking up what you're saying.
I'm sorry. Are we having bandwidth issues here? Okay. I can, so the, the consideration of repealing ordinance forty would be to level the playing field when it came to commerce in Harden County. But with the legislation that's being proposed in both the House and Senate and that is moved forward, I'm not sure that that's in Harden County's best interest.
Will there be changes for tax situations for other companies too, or just this one particular area?
What we're identifying today in ordinance forty has to do with commercial wind generation.
Yeah.
Only.
So will there be future changes for other areas as well?
It would really depend on which areas needed to be identified. But at this point, I believe what's being proposed in the Iowa House and Iowa Senate is removing the local control from the county supervisors that oversee the, have the taxing authority and economic authority in each individual county. So I, I would tell you personally that we need to look at each situation on a case-by-case basis.
I see. Thank you.
Welcome, Donna. Thank you. Lance, anything to add?
It's public hearing now.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead. Sorry, because it just saved me a bunch of time with, so what? So this is being repealed and that's going to be amended?
What are the, the suggestion was repealing today or to repeal it today, but when it comes to looking at the actual repeal and then another agenda item coming up, that's something that Lance and I need to get the public opinion on. And then we can have more formal debate amongst ourselves to decide if that's really in the best interest of Harden County.
And does any, did the RWE dropping their lawsuit against the county supervisors have any bearing on this coming up now?
I don't believe so. I think this, and I can address this in the next agenda item is we want there to be equal playing field when it comes to commerce in Harden County.
How was it, how was this making it unfair?
Well, there's, if you look at the different portions of Iowa code, what we have as incentives compared to what Iowa code's minimums are, we'd like to find a level playing field between those. And there's legislation that gives more advantage to developers compared to the counties. And so it's just something we have to weigh and hopefully getting that feedback in a public hearing is the best way at this point, doing our due diligence. Yes, Pauline?
So do we tax, or do you guys then tax like the hogs, farms and the chicken farms and this and that? Do you get?
There's tax revenue on that, yes.
Okay.
Anything else? Otherwise, I can ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close public hearing on the repeal of ordinance forty.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item I have is consideration of adoption of the resolution to amend ordinance one.
I'll make a motion to approve the adoption of a resolution to amend ordinance number one.
I'll second that. And discussion?
Yeah, I did listen to the comments. To have it posted in the paper. This will not make it a mandatory that we have to post in the paper, but it's still a good idea that we could still do that.
Yeah, I think this brings us in line with state code. And I think that as a county, I appreciate the work that Michael and Matt and Jessica do on, and our department heads and elected officials do on making sure that information is out there and readily available. Using, utilizing technology that we've become very reliant and dependent on. So I, I believe that this is a equitable round of going down. Any other discussion? Roll call, Jolene?
Lance?
Aye.
PJ?
Aye, motion carries. Next item I have is adoption of the resolution to amend ordinance number forty.
Since the state, like you mentioned, all this, I'm not going to make a motion for that.
Okay. I believe that with pending legislation that could have detrimental impacts on tax collections, which therefore offset other expenses in the county. I can't, I, I won't make a motion to repeal ordinance forty today.
It's not to our benefit. I, I can I can push it forward to be voted down. Yes, I guess I'll do that.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve. To amend ordinance forty.
Okay, I'll second that. Discussion?
Pretty much said it. I'm not a favorer of it.
One of the other, I would like to acknowledge the fact that we have Mark Bush Camp and Angela De La Riva in our county working on economic development. Hard and fast, when given the opportunities, and I would rather see our two seasoned professional developers working with development in terms of development agreements that benefit both the citizens of Harden County and those that rely on the revenues from taxes. So roll call, Jolene?
Lance?
Nay.
PJ?
No. Motion fails. Next item I have is a motion to set public hearing in consideration of resolution to relinquish interest in easement. This is the the easement near Pine Lake Corn Processors and NRP. I would like to propose April twentieth, twenty twenty-two at nine oh two AM in a large conference room with the Harden County Courthouse.
Twenty, seven.
Twentieth. Because we're, our publication dates need to be one twenty.
I will make that motion.
Okay, I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Lynn, you're up. Sure, come on up. All right, this morning.
Good, good.
Good, thank you.
Just wanted to take a minute here to update you on some things with our general assistance. As you know, you know, with moving toward July first where myself, Jody Hamilton and Michelle Walker will all be technically regional employees, but were employed by Franklin County. But of course, general assistance doesn't really fall under the region. It's still a county function. We've always done that through our office. So what we've come up with is previous years in our budgeting, it's been, you know, five percent of my, in the last few years, that five percent of my time, five percent of Jody's time that was general attributed to general assistance. What we're going to do is I'm going to become totally region. So there'll be no county you know, dollars there for that. Jody would be ten percent. So we're still doing ten percent, but it's just all of Jody's. And part of the reason for doing that is because what they call them hybrid employees, if they're doing both county work and regional. And it just makes sense to have the fewest number of people doing that as possible. And then we did get clarification that even though I'm a hundred percent region, I can still, they call it like incremental. So like the guidance, Jody does a good job with the GA and she's been doing it a long time. I mean, I give her guidance, like she'll come to me and say, you know, interpreting the policy and with this qualified, things like that, I can still do that as an incremental duty, but I'll still be a hundred percent paid through the region. Also, another benefit of only have one person is there'll be an agreement between Franklin County and Harden County. Because we're going to be required by the state, Jody will be required as a hybrid employee to do a time study. And right now, I think they're saying one month or one week of each month, and it'll be a different week each month. And so she'll have to totally document her time. And then it'll be reconciled at the end of the year or at the end of each quarter. So you know, it makes sense to only have one person. We have to do that on rather than two or three. And so I think there are some, some benefits to that. The other thing we're going to do is we're going to try to block off time, like we generally right now, people have been coming in at any time. And Jody's been trying to meet with them. What we're going to do is we're going to try to block off Tuesday and Thursday afternoons. And a lot of what we do with general assistance is not like emergency. I mean, if it's a true emergency, we'll deal with it. But if, if it's something where, you know, they're going to need help with their rent next month because they lost their job or whatever, we'll schedule a time during those two blocks of time. And that'll also make it a lot easier with trying to keep the time monitoring and everything. Because we want to, we want to stick it as close as we can to that ten percent because at the end of the year or at the end of each quarter, you know, if either we're way off one way or the other, then there's going to have to be either the county would have to pay additional or
we own back.
Or you'd have to get paid back. And it's, that's kind of messy. So, you know, I just wanted to, and right now we're looking at Tuesday and Thursday afternoons for the GA part. The other change for Jody will be she's been on a thirty-seven and a half hour a week, but because all regional employees are on forty, so she will be forty hours. So that's going to actually give, she'll have another two and a half hours a week of work time. So it, I think it'll, I think it'll work fine. And budget-wise, you guys are ahead. I mean, I figured up because you're not paying for, that's on my time, you're only paying for Jody's time. Of course, she's at a lower rate, so you're saving some money there. Also insurance, you know, you're not paying five percent of my insurance in that budget anymore. You'll have ten percent of Jody's, but.
So with this being employee of Harden County GA that gets ninety percent of the region or employee of the region that gets ten percent of the county, she's an employee of the region that does ten percent of her time. This will be county would be contracting the GA services through Franklin County now, right? No, no. Or through the region. No, it's just that she'll get paid upfront through the region. Be reversing Franklin County for that ten percent.
I like the idea of the structure, the office hours that are going to be, you know, well-known, published. And there'll be no doubt this is when I can see Jody in the office. So I like that structure.
And we'll, we'll go, we'll make a change on the website to kind of say GA is this time. Like I say, if it's truly an emergency, I have people that come in and for whatever reason, they're like, you know, their water's going to be shut off first.
But then you have the other life things.
We'll deal with those. And, you know, Michelle's there. Michelle will be regional, which she can also help out some, someone in that area too, as part of the building. So anyway, I just wanted to kind of let you know what we've planned and.
Matt, would it be helpful if Lynn and I get ahold of you in the next few days and talk about some?
We actually have the exact hours and what, let people know.
And I think part of what we've done as the chair of the Regional Mental Health Board are transition to not having employ, there'll be people in the, every county, but transitioning them to being employed by Franklin County, but regional place. So everybody has the same handbook, wage scales. There's no differing in one county giving raises, one county not, insurance. So if we can talk about that later, I'd appreciate that, Matt. Okay. Thank you, Lynn. I appreciate it. All right. The next item I have is consideration of the twenty twenty-two Child Abuse Prevention Month proclamation. I see Carrie's on. Did you ask? Could you unmute Carrie, please, Michael? Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning. How is everybody?
Very well this morning. Thanks. Did you want to, and I'm going to ask Rocky if she has anything to add as well on the proclamation that we're about to consider?
No, I, on behalf of the Child Abuse Prevention Coalition here in Hearn County, we just want to thank you for drawing your attention to this. I will say, I think I see Dave in the back. Dave is also one of our council members. So he could read too. But anyways, there was a statewide push this year to get every county board of supervisors to adopt this proclamation. And I think as of yesterday, we were, the state was well over fifty percent of the way. So thank you. Do you want me to read it or do you want to just adopt it as approved or as written?
You know what? I'll let you read it, Carrie.
So I, I'm going to, yeah. So here goes the Hearn County Child Abuse Prevention Coalition proclamation for twenty twenty-two. Whereas in twenty twenty, there was seventy-two confirmed or founded cases of child abuse in Hearn County. And whereas child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone. And whereas our children are most valuable resources and will shape the future of Harden County. And whereas child abuse can give long-term psychological, emotional and physical effects that have lasting consequences to victims of abuse. And whereas protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate and promote social, emotional developmental and well-being of children. And whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education, health, community, faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement and families. Whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families. And whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in safe, stable and nurturing environments. And whereas prevention remains the best defense against for our children and our families. So now therefore we, the Hearn County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim April twenty twenty-two as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Hearn County. And we urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families dated in Eldora the sixth day of April twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Carrie. I appreciate you engaging the community and I appreciate of, of being a part of well-being of our children in Harden County. Rocky, I'm going to go ahead and ask, do you have anything to add? You didn't know I was going to put you on the spot this morning, Rocky.
I was not prepared. I'm sorry. I think the only thing to add is to just have individuals follow our Facebook page. It's Harden County Child Abuse Prevention Coalition. And on that page, it kind of just shows what our activities will be this month. And then, of course, we have our blue plywood cutout of kids that travel around the different. blue plywood cutout of kids that travel around the different communities in Harden County, so if you see them out and about, just go take a selfie with them and post them to our Facebook page. It's just a, it's a nice way that we can, um, raise awareness. And then we're also doing a darkness to light training on April fourteenth, which is full, but it will be in Iowa Fall, so, um, we're just looking forward to that event, so thank you again.
Right, thank you, Rocky. With that being said, you've heard the proclamation and.
I will make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two Child Abuse Prevention Month proclamation.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? Are you none on their say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next I have is consideration of the March report from the county auditor.
I'll make a motion to approve the auditor's monthly report.
I have a motion and I'll second that. Any discussion? Are you none on there? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next I have, uh, consideration of canceling the April thirteenth and June eighth, Board of Supervisors meeting. On the thirteenth of April, uh, Auditor Peters has staff attending training and, uh, she requested that we consider canceling the meeting that day so staff can attend training. And on June eighth would be the day following the primary in which, uh, her staff will have just completed the primary election, and that's just a matter of courtesy of making sure that after one night that they're not back in here right away in the morning, uh, and in the event that, uh, things go long, that, uh, we have plenty of time.
Oh, and then make that motion to cancel the for thirteen twenty-two at six eight of twenty-two Board of Supervisors meeting.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Are you none on there? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item I have is the consideration of approving the recorder's, uh, monthly report for the month of March.
Motion to approve your report's monthly report.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Are you none on there? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Other business. Michelle? Dave?
No, sir.
Jolene, Thomas?
You heard last night on the news, um, Harden County has a, has EPI in the county, and the governor has made a proclamation to be able to use any state resources that are needed at that. Other than that, I have absolutely zero information. Um, it is run from the federal and the state level.
Okay.
So.
Thank you, Thomas. Taylor, anything else to add? Okay, Lance?
No.
Hey, I don't have anything either. I can ask for a adjournment.
Do adjourn.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.